Regular meeting number 19 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Good and gracious God, the members of Columbus City Council meet tonight in session to address the business of our great city. In these days of tension among nations, we pray that you would grant us the gift of peace, which the world alone cannot give. We pray especially this evening for our fellow citizens in Boston and in the annual marathon, especially those suffering from the senseless violence perpetrated on them by people who destroy rather than nurture and build. Turn the hearts of the violent to desire peace and concord and give comfort to the We pray for reconciliation among all people and among nations and a renewed sense of community in our city, so that all citizens take personal responsibility to promote the common good and lend a helping hand to those who need it. We especially pray for our children, Lord, who are often forgotten as we adults go about the business of our lives. Help us to remember that tomorrow belongs to them and that what we offer them now will in a large sense determine the direction of the future of our city as well as the whole human race. When selfishness and self-centeredness tempt us to look only out for ourselves or for those who we count among our closest associates, help us to remember the requirements of the common good and the obligation we have to contribute to that common good in all things, Lord. We look to you for inspiration and guidance. And finally, on this final day for filing income taxes, may all of us accept our responsibility for supporting the government and our fellow citizens through honestly reporting our taxes. We know, Lord, that you will never abandon us but lead us to a better tomorrow. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal?
So moved.
Sir, second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
At this time.
Thank you. Are there any resolutions or announcements by members of council? Councilmember Craig?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have an announcement I'm extremely excited about what's going to happen around the Livingston Avenue South Side next week, actually April the 22nd through the 27th. In collaboration with the Harmony Project, there are a number of groups that will be working throughout that week, and I'll just list them very quickly. The Alvis House, Capital University, the City of Columbus, in particular, the Department of Recreation and Parks. There will be activity from Columbus City Council. The Easton Community Foundation, the Fairwood Park and Livingston area residents, the Jewish Community Center of Greater Columbus, Kaboom, and I think that's the group that's going to be putting together the recreation activities. Livingston Avenue Area Commission, Nationwide Children's Hospital, Neighborhood Design Center, the Puffin Foundation West, and certainly South High School. Let me just very quickly mention the day's activities. Livingston Avenue Spring Cleanup Project, and that's Monday through Wednesday, April the 22nd, the 23rd, and the 24th. There will be 24 sidewalks and lots along Livingston Avenue and the South Side to be spruced up, storefronts along Livingston Avenue to be painted, 10 murials will be drawn by the wonderful artists, by the Peace of Art Muriel Project, Tuesday, April the 23rd, murials reflecting 100 years of history in the Livingston Avenue neighborhood and to be created by local artists, then painted and mounted by volunteers. And of course, the Playground Project, it's the Playground Build Project, Wednesday, April the 24th. A new state-of-the-art playground to be installed in the Fairwood Park. This is one of only 12 playgrounds awarded nationally in 2013 and the only one in this region. And then the Streetcar District Landscape Project, Thursday, April the 21st. A sculpture and landscaping to be installed completing the plans for the North Side of Livingston Avenue and Nelson Road and the east entrance of the Streetcar District. 100 trees will be planted by the Tree Planting Project Friday, April the 26th. Trees to be planted at the Jewish Community Center of Greater Columbus, along Livingston Avenue at South High School and Fairwood, Dashler, and Driving Park. And then 100 blocks. South High School Area Spring Cleanup Project Saturday, April the 27th. Street-to-street blocks around South High School to be cleaned. So extremely excited about what's going to happen on our South Side and wanted to take this opportunity to certainly thank all of the volunteers and all of the organizations that's going to be involved in that wonderful collaborative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, President Ginther. I have two resolutions. The first is 80X 2013, and I'd like to invite Keith Farrell from the Columbus Police Department as well as Coach Gene Caslin to come forward. And this is to 80X 2013 to recognize and honor Coach Gene Caslin for his long and distinguished teaching and coaching career in the city of Columbus. He just retired from 33 years of being with Columbus City Schools, 14 of which is the head coach of Mifflin, who has four district championships under your tenure. And this is a really special person, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Mr. Farrell and let him talk about why we're here honoring Coach Caslin.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, all respective members of council. I appreciate your time and certainly supporting this resolution. And I'm just going to share a little story exactly why I'm here. Most of you know I'm the Executive Vice President of Ternor Police, certainly a Columbus police officer, but I'm not here for either one of those entities tonight. I'm just here on my own based on what I've seen from Coach, and you'll hear me refer to him as Coach continually because I didn't know his name until I put him in for this resolution. I just knew him as Coach. During my course of duties as a police officer, I'm fortunate enough to be able to work Special Duty, and I got an opportunity six, seven years ago, I'm not sure, to work Mifflin football games. It was exciting because I'm, of course, a sports fan, so that was a great opportunity to go out there. Fortunate at that school that we had very few problems, and that at times lets me peek at the game. And so I would stand on the sidelines quite a bit, support the team, and Coach was always there. He's the basketball coach, but he's at every football game I was ever at. And we talked. We talked a lot. I'm not sure if he knew my name. I didn't know his. I just knew him as Coach. But we talked about a lot of things. We talked about sports and his, you know, some of the accomplishments he's made throughout the years. We've also talked about the kids and the importance of the guidance that some of these kids get. It was more than just a game to Coach. It was teaching these kids about life, about discipline, about how to carry this over into their adult lives. So I was very fortunate to hear Coach preach for years about this, on how he felt about this and the importance to these young, to the youth in our community. Well, one day this year, I was fortunate enough, I got a call and said, hey, can you work Special Duty at a basketball game at Mifflin? Great, I love basketball, right? And I get to see Coach coach. So I show up and I see Coach and said, hey, Coach, how you doing? And he says, hey, I didn't know you were here. And we exchange courtesies to each other. Watched the game, it's a pretty good game, rival game, and there's about a minute 36 left in the game. Mifflin's down by about eight points, six or eight points. You know basketball, very winnable game. At that point, I saw the referee come over and he said, Coach, one of your kids is jawing a little bit too much out there. I don't want to hear any more of it, something to that effect. Coach said, who's that? Pointed out a young man on the floor. I didn't hear any of this happen, but just witnessed this part of it. And Coach says, which kid? And he points him out, and Coach says, come here, you're done. Have a seat. My opinion, by far, this was the best athlete on the floor. Game's on the line, six points, minute 36 to go. Coach teaches this young man that there is a way to conduct yourself in a basketball game and in life. Sits him down. Matter of fact, I'm not sure if anything else is exchanged, he says, you can go to the locker room, we'll tell you how the game went. Pretty big lesson for a young man, very good athlete. So I see Coach after the game, they lost, Mifflin lost. See him after the game, I said, Coach, I saw what you did. That was great. What I got to witness was someone, we see this all the time, people preach all the time, but I actually got to see someone practice exactly what they preach. And it was very important, I think it would, not often we see that in today's community and the importance of that to our youth, and he's teaching him more than about a game. It was more than a game. This is about life. And, you know, Coach, I know Coach, we've shared a lot of these things. I know he certainly has hoped that over the years and that he's impacted a lot of people's lives, and I just wanted to know that I guarantee he has, and certainly I know he impacted mine just from watching his behaviors. So that's why I certainly contacted Councilman Klein, and that's why he's here, and well deserved.
It's a great story, and I'm sure my colleagues are rolling their eyes because I referee basketball and the fact that you, the fact that you found out that an official was being disrespected, you know, they're probably thinking that I'm looking out for my fellow striped shirts. They're like, yes, you need to make sure that no one yells at the referees. But in all honesty, it sets a tremendous example, and really you do put in perspective what it means to be in the profession. And my coach, you know, taught us many of the same lessons, and I think of how many kids he's impacted, and I know that the list is numerous on how many kids that you've impacted on your career. The microphone is yours, Coach.
Wow. I don't have much to say except hello to a fellow Eastmore alumnus, Ms. Tyson, old friend of mine, and it's never about winning and losing even though you want to, but teaching in Columbus for so many years and coaching, it's about impacting those young men beyond basketball. Always told them basketball is secondary and your education comes first. And as inner-city coach, sometimes you have to sacrifice a win to teach a lesson that you know is more important than basketball. So thank you very much.
Any questions or comments from my colleague? Councilmember Tyson, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Klein, and just add some comments on, certainly I've known, and we didn't call him Gene Caslin, but another name for him when we grew up, but I've known him pretty much all my life, and there's another Eastmore graduate in the auditorium who will be coming up here, Senator Charlita Tavares. And we are certainly, as we look at, think about Columbus Public Schools, we are the recipients of Columbus Public School. We graduated from Eastmore High School, you know, we grew up in Shepherd Community, and just watching Mr. Caslin over the years, as he has grown and developed into the man that he is and to be able to stand before us today, and it's really about what he, the work he has done for our young people on the, you know, in sports, but also in teaching and being such an amazing role model, and as you just mentioned, especially for males. And so we really thank you for the service in our community, and I was so excited to see your name on the resolution list because of this defined character that you are, and certainly it was an honor and privilege to attend school with you and to have you stand here today and be honored by this council. So congratulations to you, and I wish you the very best. Thank you, Chairman Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any other questions or comments? I move for passage. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther. Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
On my second resolution, unfortunately, is not as celebratory. It's 81X to support the expansion of the Medicaid program in the state of Ohio. And I know that Councilmember Tyson mentioned that Senator Tavares is here, has been a champion of this, and all I can say is that this is, as the legislative process develops in across the street here at the State House, we only can hope that the legislators over there that are standing in the way of providing insurance coverage to approximately 275,000 Ohioans, the ones that need it the most, the ones that deserve it. The same legislatures, as a columnist pointed out, had no problem taking their own state-funded insurance as a member of the legislature. And I only hope that they can transcend politics and do what's right for humanity, which in this instance, of the 275,000 folks that are in desperate need of health insurance. Just a reminder what the program is, it's the federal government is paying 100% of the cost phased in, down to 90%, so economically it's an absolute no-brainer. And I hope that the folks that are struggling to understand the economics of it, that 100% of guaranteed money is a good thing for the state of Ohio, and even at a 90% rate to insure 275,000 people is the obvious and correct choice. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's it? Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. President Protem Miller?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. Tonight I have Resolution 88X 2013 to recognize the 2013 Dr. Robert J. Fass Memorial AIDS Walk, Central Ohio, and to honor its organizers, supporters, volunteers, and participants. First, I would like to move for adoption.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. As I highlight the resolution, I would like to invite to the podium the event organizers, Sean Waybark, the Development Coordinator, and Joel Diaz, the Chief Development Officer. Welcome, gentlemen. The purpose of the April 20th event is to raise awareness and funds for the HIV AIDS service organizations. The event will benefit a number of local agencies, including the AIDS Resource Center of Central Ohio, Camp Sunrise, Nationwide Children's Hospital Faces Program, Project Open Hand, and the Ohio AIDS Coalition amongst others. This is yet just another great event that will bring participants to our downtown neighborhood for a worthy cause. Gentlemen, you have comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Miller, President Ginther, and honorable councilmembers. Thank you so much for this resolution. HIV/AIDS remains a critical impact in our community here in Central Ohio. Every 22 hours, someone is newly infected with HIV here in Central Ohio, and Columbus is ranked 21st in the country in terms of new HIV infections. So our work continues to make sure that we can educate and bring awareness to this epidemic in its 32nd year in this country and in the world, and it's through events like this that we're able to accomplish that. So we appreciate the opportunity to be recognized for such an impactful event in our community and to raise critical funds for much-needed services for those living with HIV/AIDS and to prevent new infections from occurring in our communities. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Shall you have, okay. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Miller. Just wanted to mention the date of the event.
The date is Saturday, April 20th, and the event registration opens at 9:00 a.m. And we are looking forward to having over 1,000 participants. To date, we've raised $102,000 for those critical services in our community.
And where to show up?
Bicentennial Park.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, thank you, gentlemen, for coming, and I look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thank you so much.
That is all I have. President Ginther. Thank you, President Protem Miller. Councilmember Mills? Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, this evening I have two resolutions, and the first one is Resolution 0076X-2013, and I'm going to ask Senator Charlita Tavares to start walking towards the podium. Good evening.
Good evening.
The resolution is to honor and to recognize the Multi-Ethnic Advocates for Cultural Competence, or known as MAC, on the occasion of its 10th anniversary. Whereas in 2003, the Multi-Ethnic Advocates for Cultural Competence, MAC, was formed to integrate cultural competence as a cornerstone of Ohio's behavioral health system. And whereas MAC is the only statewide organization committed to enhancing the quality of life, quality of healthcare by incorporating culturally competent practices into the systems and organizations that provide services to Ohio's diverse populations. And whereas MAC regularly sponsors lectures, conferences, educational seminars, and research to promote cultural competence, the elimination of health disparities, and the development of assessment tools and strategies to assess organizations, to assist organizations and individuals. And whereas MAC will host its 10th Anniversary Gala, celebrating our cultural kaleidoscope, on Thursday, April 25th of 2013, at the Ohio Historical Society. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that we do hereby congratulate the Multi-Ethnic Advocates for Cultural Competence on their 10th anniversary and wish them continued success as they promote cultural proficiency and skills development for physical and mental health professionals and providers throughout the state of Ohio. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Senator, thank you. Senator Tavares, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. To my former colleagues, certainly I am very, very proud to have this resolution presented to the Multi-Ethnic Advocates for Cultural Competence. I'm here as the Executive Director, and I'm going to introduce my Board Chair, Jill Frost, who's going to share some more comments, and then I'm introducing our Marketing and Development Committee Chair, Darin Neely, who is also with the Capital University Multicultural Center, their law school up there. But before I turn it over to the Board Chair, I just want to capitalize on some comments that Councilman Klein made with respect to Medicaid. One of the reasons our organization is in existence is to ensure that we eliminate health disparities amongst racial, ethnic, and cultural communities across the state of Ohio. We know that there's disparate care, treatment, and outcomes for those of racial, ethnic, and cultural communities, and we are the organization that's providing tools for individuals and providers to understand the populations. And the priest in the prayer talked about how we better understand each other so that we learn to respect and appreciate each other. That's what our organization is all about. So I'm going to turn it over to my Board Chair, Jill Frost, and she's going to tell you a little bit more about the event.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, Columbus City Council. It is a pleasure to represent MAC this evening. We are celebrating our 10th anniversary. This is our first time hosting a gala, this kind of celebration, and we thought this was a good time. These are important times for cultural competency, diversity, inclusion. We have heard over and over again how important these times are to inclusion, and so we thought this was a good time to celebrate. And we want to publicly acknowledge our partners who are celebrating with us, including Nationwide Children's Hospital, Care Source, Capital University, the Ohio State University Office of Diversion and Inclusion, the Ohio Hispanic Coalition, minority brands including Bounce TV, Azteca, and Telemundo, the Columbus African-American News Journal, TalkTainment Radio, Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers, the Community for New Direction, and Delmar TV. And what a joy it is to have so many sponsors that I can't remember them all, and I have to write them down, so we really... And Franklin County Department of Developmental Disabilities and the Ohio Developmental Disabilities Council. The event will be held on Thursday at the Ohio Historical Society, Thursday, April 25th, and we invite all of you to come out and celebrate with us. These are serious times, but this is a milestone celebration for us, and so we are taking this opportunity to celebrate our cultural kaleidoscope. We have food from different cultures, we have entertainment from different cultures, Irish dancers, belly dancers. I did not know that belly dancing was such a high art. I'm learning a lot about belly dancing as we move through this process. We have African drummers, and we have Japanese drummers. And again, we will be at the Ohio Historical Society in the red carpet area on Thursday, April 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very, very much, and we've got some material that we'll share with you, and if anyone else wants information, they can go to www.maccinc.com, macinc.net. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tavares. Thank you. And then the next resolution, I'm going to be bringing up two organizations, and so Lifeline of Ohio and CEO Kent Holloway, and the Lifeline Volunteer Sherry Goldwin, as well as the Links, the Central Ohio Chapter, Columbus Chapter. And I'm going to ask the Links to come up and the President, Trudy Bartley, and the Vice, well, the whole, everybody, come on. Everybody come up to the, all the organizations. This is Resolution 0083X-2013. It is to declare April 2013 to be Donate Life Month in Columbus and to encourage all residents to consider sharing the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. Whereas more than 117,000 men, women, and children are currently awaiting a life-saving organ transplant in the United States, including more than 3,400 Ohioans awaiting an organ transplant at any one time. Whereas a single donor can potentially save the lives of eight people through organ donation by donating their heart, lungs, liver, pancreas, kidneys, small intestine, and enhance the lives of more than 50 others through their tissue donation by donating corneas, veins, heart valves, bones, skins, tendons, ligaments, and nerves. And whereas Lifeline of Ohio is a designated organ procurement organization dedicated to promoting and coordinating the donation of organs and tissue for transplantation in our community. And whereas the Linkages to Life Organ, Tissue, and Bone Marrow Donation Awareness Program is an annual church-based initiative sponsored by the Links Incorporated to encourage more African-Americans to consider organ, tissue, and bone marrow donation. And whereas April has been proclaimed Donate Life both nationally and locally. And whereas April 19th of 2013 has been selected as National Blue and Green Day, which encourages supporters of organ, eye, and tissue donation to wear shades of blue and green to draw attention to the need for more registered donors. Now therefore, be it resolved by this Council of the City of Columbus, that we do hereby declare April of 2013 to be the Donate Life Month in Columbus and encourage all residents to consider sharing the gift of life through organ, tissue, organ, eye, and tissue donation. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I think the first speaker is going to be Mr. Kent Holloway, is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So Council President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council, thank you very much on behalf of my organization for having us here, and thank you on behalf of the 740 local individuals waiting for our life-saving organ... And thank you on behalf of the 740 local individuals waiting for a life-saving organ transplant. So you mentioned April 19th. So April 19th is part of National Donate Life Month. Lifeline of Ohio and its supporters will join thousands of Americans in wearing green and blue. As in past years, we hope that by wearing Donate Life collars that we will draw attention to the staggering health crisis by showing the remarkable difference organ and tissue donation makes in the lives of recipients, living donors, donor family members, and those waiting for the gift of life. We'd like to invite the members of city council, as well as the citizens of the City of Columbus, to join us in wearing blue and green on April 19th, as we offer hope to those waiting on a transplant, honor those who give the life, who give the gift of life, remember those who died while waiting, and celebrate those who received a second chance at life. In addition, Lifeline of Ohio would like to thank the City of Columbus for continuing to encourage every citizen to register their donation decision in the Ohio Donor Registry. In turn, our mission is not only to be good stewards of the gifts of life given in the community, but to also be an involved corporate citizen, helping to bring hope and vitality to the neighborhoods of our great city. We partner with many great organizations, such as The Links Inc., to share the importance of donation in our service area. I'd like now to introduce you to Sheri Goodwin, a Donate Life Ambassador, kidney recipient, and City of Columbus employee.
Council President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, and members of council. My name is Sheri Goodwin, and I'm a Personnel Analyst too for the City of Columbus. For the past 18 years, I have helped test our police and fire candidates to ensure suitability for hiring. It is a job that I love to do, and one that I wasn't sure I would be able to return to when I got sick very suddenly about 10 years ago. In 2003, I wasn't feeling my best. I thought I had the flu, but after my symptoms got worse, I decided to go to urgent care. Once there, they took a quick look at me and then told me I needed to go to the emergency room for treatment. At that time, I was told I didn't have the flu. Instead, I was in complete kidney failure due to my uncontrolled high blood pressure. Once I arrived at the hospital, they immediately put me on dialysis for two weeks to help regulate my kidneys. Once I was stable, I endured five more years of dialysis while waiting for a kidney transplant. Over time, my energy depleted, and I found it harder and harder to do my daily tasks. I was no longer living as a young vibrant woman in her early 30s. I was now tired and struggling to make it through my week. Before I was listed as a transplant, for a transplant, my family members were tested to see if they could be my donor. However, for one reason or another, they were all ruled out. I would now have to depend on the generosity of a stranger to keep me alive. It was March 14th, 2008, when the call I had been waiting for came. But it wasn't the call I expected. I was second in line for the kidney. After waiting for what seemed like an eternity, I was told the first person listed was not able to receive the transplant at that time. I was next in line. On March 16th, 2008, I received the gift of life. I later corresponded with my donor family and learned my donor was Jackie, who had lived her life right here in Columbus, Ohio. I've had the opportunity to meet my donor family, and we correspond regularly. After my transplant, I couldn't believe how wonderful I felt. It took some time to recover, but now, five years later, I can say how incredible this gift was. It has changed the course of my life forever. I now volunteer with Lifeline of Ohio, and have done a variety of activities, including a presentation to the local chapter of The Links Incorporated, a group of dedicated, extraordinary women who are committed to enriching and sustaining the culture of African Americans. I've taken on the cause of donation, and I am grateful to show them and the rest of the world what a difference it can make in someone's life. On behalf of all of us touched by donation, thank you for your support of organ, eye, and tissue donation.
Thank you, Sheri. And I think President Bartley.
Good evening, Councilmember Tyson. Council President Ginther, council members, thank you so much for recognizing the great work that we're doing with Lifeline of Ohio and the African American community. Again, I'm Trudy Bartley, and I'm President of the Columbus Chapter of The Links Incorporated. And many of you may not be aware of who we are as a national, international organization. If you'd give me a moment, I'd like to explain the great work that we do, not only here in Columbus, but nationally and internationally with our group. The Links Incorporated is an international, not-for-profit corporation, established in 1946. The members consist of 12,000 professional women of color in 276 chapters located in 41 states, the District of Columbia, and the Commonwealth of Bahamas. Is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of extraordinary women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the cultural, economic survival of African Americans and other persons of African ancestry. The Columbus Chapter of The Links was a 16th chapter founded in March 1950, and we currently have an impressive roster of 49 active members, inclusive of Councilwoman Priscilla Tyson. The members of The Links Incorporated are influential decision-makers, opinion leaders. The Links has attracted many distinguished women who are individual achievers and have made a difference in their communities, in the world, and they are business and civic leaders, role models, mentors, activists, and volunteers who work towards a common vision of engaging like-minded organizations and individuals in partnership, strengthening their communities, enhancing their nation. The outstanding programming of The Links Incorporated has five facets, which include National Trends and Services, the Arts, Services to Youth, International Trends and Services, and Health and Human Services. The programs are implemented through strategies such as public information and education, economic development, and public policy campaigns. Today, we are here due to our partnership and our engagement with Lifeline of Ohio and the African American community, and I would like to introduce Angela Ramos Fields, our Health and Human Services Program Chair, to briefly discuss our chapter's collaboration in this endeavor. Angela?
Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, President Ginther, and other distinguished members of the council. Fifty years ago, organ transplant was a rare and risky procedure. Now, more than 25,000 organ transplants are performed each year, and many of those transplant recipients return to normal, active lives due to modern surgical techniques and drug therapies. But supply of donated organs lag far behind the need, and 100,000 people die each year waiting for a transplant. The need is especially great in the African American community. Through linkages of life, coupled with the Columbus Chapter of The Links Incorporated, partnered with the Lifeline of Ohio, we're working together to continue the partnership with organ and tissue bone marrow donation initiative. African Americans as a group have greater-than-average need for organ and tissue transplants. That's because blacks have medical conditions that have permanent organ damage, such as high blood pressure, diabetes, heart disease, and kidney disorders. It's important for African Americans to consider organ donation and talk to their families about it, because this is a great need, and because of similar genetics, genetics can lead to more successful transplants. Donation is a personal decision. You can choose which organs and tissues to donate, and as a living donator, or at the time of your death. Everyone can play a part in saving lives now and in the future. This is what we believe. This is how we can impact our community. This is our mission, our vision, and ultimately, we feel that together, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down. First of all, I want to thank Kent, but I also want to thank Sheri for sharing her story. And I want to thank the Columbus Chapter of The Links Incorporated for the work that they're doing, because it is imperative that individuals have another chance at life, and it can be done through organ donation. So thank you for the work that you're doing, the Columbus Chapter of The Links, Lifeline of Ohio, and just want to say just thank you, because I hope the listening and viewing audience will certainly take this message to heart and consider being an organ donor. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing. Thank you. Trudy, would you take the time to introduce the ladies of The Links, please?
Oh, I'd like the ladies to introduce themselves.
Okay, that'd be fine, okay.
Good evening. My name is Angela, I'm sorry. Good evening. My name is Angela Ramos Fields.
Good evening. I'm Regina Randall Peel, and I serve the Columbus Chapter of The Links as the Vice President.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Meshika Williams-Roberts.
Good evening, Melinda Carter.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Fleming.
And good evening. My name's Shelley Fisher.
Thank you so much for coming down. And I have just a couple of announcements. This Thursday, April 18th, at 5:30 p.m., the Health and Human Services Committee will host a public hearing to discuss minority health. April was Minority Health Month, and the hearing is an opportunity for us to highlight the state of healthcare for the minority communities in Columbus. And representatives from the Columbus Office of Minority Health will be present and will present valuable information to the committee. And my last announcement is I would like to take a brief moment to recognize our dear friend, Auditor Dorian, for his exceptional work, his work ethic, and unsurpassed ability to lead by example. Thanks to Auditor Dorian's stewardship, the City of Columbus's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, commonly referred to as the CARF, CAFR, I'm sorry, was issued for the year ending December 31 of 2012, with an unqualified independent auditor's report on March 26 of 2013. This report is a user-friendly document, providing transparency to the city's financial transactions. For the last 32 years, this has been issued by Auditor Dorian, has been awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. The City of Columbus has also been recognized by bond rating agencies and others for our prompt completion of this report. Both this year and historically, Columbus is consistently the first large city in the nation to issue this report within 90 days of year's end. By completing this in a timely fashion, the city significantly contributes to the prevailing sense of confidence, certainty, and trust that makes Columbus a superior destination to live and do business. Thank you, Auditor Dorian. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials? City Auditor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanks to all of council for those accolades. And let me say it's strictly due to just a simply outstanding group of dedicated public servants that I have around me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorian. City Attorney's Office? This time, I'd request the following ordinances be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda. In the Public Service and Transportation Committee 0759-2013, and in Public Utilities Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? So move. Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 860-2013, Public Utilities Committee Ordinances 593, 610, 616, 619, 663, 679, 760, and 784-2013. Zoning Committee Ordinances 713 and 845-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 89X, 84X, 85X-2013. Finance Committee Ordinance 792-2013. Development Committee Ordinances 862, 870, and 871-2013. Technology Committee Ordinance 703 and 805-2013. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee Ordinance 1979-2012. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinances 756, 812, 815-2013. Public Utilities Committee Ordinances 506, 519, 608, 775-2013. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0067, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, and 79-2013.
Thank you. We do have a speaker for the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you would come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. Sir, it looks like you have signed up to speak on 0862-2013. I haven't marked here for or against, but sir, you have three minutes.
Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue. I'm speaking in support of 0862-2013. I've got two questions. When a property owner rents a home, a resident should be notified who pays the water bills or not to be left in some dying circumstances. I'm in support of it is because I think this sustained at least $80,000. I want to start right there, but I would like to have more clarification, if I could, please. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Interim Director Brandon, any additional comments or information you can provide on 0862-213?
Yes. Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. This legislation does authorize the expenditure of $75,000 from the Community Development Block Fund for eligible relocation activities. Mr. Wilkins talked about the water bill and things like that. These funds are used when code enforcement after an inspection has issued an emergency vacate order. If that is the case, then these funds may kick in for eligible homeowners, and it allows up to $650 for relocation expenses due to emergency vacates. Some of them may in fact result from water shut-off or things of that nature. So if there's anything additional I can share with Mr. Wilkins, and I can do that, he has provided me with all of his contact information, and I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, Director Brandon. Any additional questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? So move. Sarah Second. Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller?
Mills?
Yes.
Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, Consent Agenda carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tableed emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have one ordinance in finance this evening. It's 0793-2013, to authorize Finance and Management Director to modify and extend a contract with S.A. Communale for the annual smoke and fire alarm testing, inspection and repair and sprinkler inspections, fire pump testing, and fire suppression testing for various city facilities under the purview of the Facilities Management Division, and to authorize expenditure of $170,000 from the General Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. This contract was initially bid to provide service for a year with up to four one-year options, but we want to extend it out, asking for a bid waiver for this year because we have one ongoing and critical project that is underway with significant involvement of this company and involves the Department of Public Safety, Office of Support Services. We want to have a fully integrated system for next year. And this company has agreed to hold their pricing for another year and there is a commitment to bid this contract out in 2014. And so with that, I move for approval.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The next ordinance is 0842-2013, and I'm going to ask a number of the nonprofit organizations who are being funded by this resolution to walk up to the podium. And this legislation is to authorize the appropriation of $120,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into agreements with various social service agencies to provide support for critical social service programs, and to authorize expenditure of $120,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation targets social service agencies that will provide help to families and households through pharmacy care, crisis counseling and intervention, diabetes programs, homeless youth services, violence prevention, educational activities, health services, employment activities, career development for women in the workplace, and technology skills for youth. In addition, the city supports programs and activities so that the greater population is assured access to other community assistance. This funding will allow the process to continue for these much-needed services. And the organizations that will be receiving funding through this legislation are, first, the Charitable Pharmacy of Central Ohio for $25,000 to be able to provide for operating support to make sure, to ensure that individuals who may not be able to afford their necessary medications, that they are able to receive them through the Charitable Pharmacy of Central Ohio. We have Mary Haven is here. I should name them. Paul Coleman is here from Mary Haven, I should have mentioned, from Charitable Pharmacy. We have Alan Zinger, Zingler, who's Executive Director. So, Mary Haven will also be using these dollars really in the Southern Gateway community to make sure, to provide crisis intervention and alcohol drug treatment in the community. We have the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, and Jean Grotheaus is here, and Rick Harrison. We also are be, for that's $15,000, the Homeless Families Foundation is also with us this evening, and Susan Davis is here. And we see the Jewish Family Services, Toby Furman is here to support their Teen Date Violence Prevention Intervention Program. We have Alpha Minority Youth Engineering Program. Those dollars are used to support engineering opportunities in education and to work with minority students. We're also the Community Shelter Board for $15,000 funds to support our homeless youth and provide access to housing, healthcare, and employment to them. So, these agencies are all here, and we're so happy to be able to provide this support, to be able to support the work that you're doing each and every day to support our community. Alan, each of you just come up and say your name and the organization you represent.
Good evening. My name is Renee Shakurdi. I'm the President of the Board of the Central Ohio Diabetes Association. Thank you so much.
Paul Coleman, President of Mary Haven, thank you for your support of our work.
June Gutterman, CEO of Jewish Family Services, thank you very much for your support.
Good evening. Toby Furman, Jewish Family Services, and thank you very much for supporting the work.
Rick Harrison with the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, we really appreciate your support.
Jean Grotheaus, Executive Director for the Central Ohio Diabetes Association, thank you for helping us deliver our mission.
Michelle Heritage for Community Shelter Board, thanks so much. We're going to be able to help our transitional age youth with these dollars, new provider, new programs. Appreciate it.
Susan Davis with the Homeless Families Foundation, thank you so much for your support.
Denise Gentry-Jack with the Alpha Minority Youth Engineering Program, thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Alan Zanger, and this is Jim Donan, who's our Secretary for the Charitable Pharmacy of Central Ohio. On behalf of the patients that we see every day who thank us for the work we do, thank you because it really does make a difference for our patients.
Thank you for coming down this evening. And did I move for passage here? No. Did I move for passage? Did I? I moved for passage if I had not. Thank you. I'm just listening. But I want to thank my councilmembers and for supporting these organizations. They do just critically important work in our communities and we really do thank you. And thank you for your patience. I know that it's taken a while to get through all the human service applications, but we really do appreciate the work that you do in our communities. And thank you, councilmembers, for supporting them. Thank you.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 0856-2013 to authorize an appropriation of $13,000 from the Unappropriated Balance of the Citywide Training Entrepreneurial Fund so as to allow the Department of Human Resources to enhance the training supplies, equipment, and course offerings at the Citywide Training and Development Center and to declare an emergency. It is necessary to appropriate $13,000 from the Unappropriated Balance of the Citywide Entrepreneurial Fund so as to allow the Department of Human Resources to enhance the training supplies, equipment, and course offerings at the Citywide Training and Development Center. The funds are currently available in the Citywide Training Entrepreneurial Fund. This ordinance appropriates the funds and allow for needed purchases to be made. Councilmember Tyson, your office was instrumental in pertaining to this ordinance. Any comments regarding this?
Thank you, Chairman Craig. And I'm just very excited that we will be able to ensure that businesses will be able to utilize the training, the great training that we have here at the City of Columbus, and just really excited they'll have this opportunity for them and their employees to be able to come here and learn from our great staff in human resources and training and use those skills to be able to move their businesses forward. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none, move for a passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
President Ginther, would you like for me to move on to Public Service and Transportation at this time or circle back? In Public Service and Transportation, I have ordinance 0778-2013 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to contract for the option to purchase traffic signal controller equipment for the Public Service Department with Path Masters, Inc., and Baldwin &amp; Sowers, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $2 to establish a contract from the Mail, Print, Service, and UTC Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes 1959 and to declare an emergency. Director Kelsey, comments regarding this ordinance?
Certainly. This is to reestablish, President Ginther, President Protem Craig, other members of council, this is simply to reestablish these two contracts. They were both bid in 2009. These are the two low bidders. Due to a glitch, the contracts expired March 1 of this year. In the original contract, they were supposed to go until March 14. We need to come back to council on a regular basis to get this extended, and this is what we're doing. About six weeks late, but we're coming back to reestablish these contracts. And then we bid this out at the conclusion of 14, 2014. So, this is for traffic controller instruments that we use repeatedly for traffic signals throughout the city, and these items are desperately needed.
Thank you for your comments. If there are no questions, additional questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0797-2013 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts for the option to purchase limestone and gravel aggregates for the city's agencies with Shelley Materials, Inc., and the Olin Corporation, to authorize expenditure of $2 to establish the contract from the Mail, Print, Service, and UTC Fund to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes 1959 and to declare an emergency. Director Kelsey, again, the question regarding waiving the competitive bidding.
Certainly. President Ginther, President Protem Craig, and other members of council, this contract was bid on January 31 through the Office of Purchasing, Finance, and Management Department. Two bids were received, 43 bids were solicited, only two bids were received. These are the two bids that were received. As you've stated, this is for the purchase of limestone and gravel aggregates that we use for a variety of things with respect to roadway patching, not least with pothole patching, among other things. And there are two issues with respect to the waiver of competitive bidding here. The first one is that with respect to item four, Shelley Materials was the only bidder on item four, which is one of the aggregates that we need. They took exception to the specification, and they should have. It was an outdated specification that was mistakenly put in the bid. So, we, through the Office of Purchasing, negotiated with them, actually, the new specifications and the new spec book. So, we took care of that problem and we are in accord with them for that item four that we need. So, we're asking for a waiver of bidding with respect to that particular issue. The second issue has to do with delivery. Some of these items are picked up, some are delivered. There was an omission in the bidding documents for delivery. There was no provision for delivery. So, the Office of Purchasing, again, on behalf of many city agencies that utilized this contract, Department of, most notably, next to me, Department of Public Utilities, we're not the only ones that use this particular contract. Some items are delivered, some items are picked up. So, the Office of Purchasing negotiated a price for some of the delivered items, and that's the other portion that needs to be remedied with respect to this particular bid invitation.
Thank you, Director Kelsey. Questions or comments regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0861-2013 to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, to authorize a city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation for construction services for the Interstate 70, 18th Street and Mound Street Project, to authorize the expenditure of $1,310,000 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, Director, did you have a point that you wanted to make regarding this?
President Ginther, President Protem Craig, I think you've handled everything you've said at all. This is just another step in 7071 Interstate 7071 project. This is 2C. ODOT is moving forward with this. This is $31 million. It's going to be pumped into the economy next year with flyover bridge coming, landing on Mound Street, and then a new bridge at 18th and Moo Berry just north of Children's Hospital. This is a nice project for the City of Columbus.
Thank you very much for your comments, Director. Just for a point of the clarification of the records, Councilmember, Council President Protem Miller is Protem, but thank you very much for your comments, and I appreciate so much your comments tonight. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you very much. May I move to Public Utilities?
Yes, sir, but I think we need to go back to consent on ordinance 0759, if you don't mind, sir?
Yes, sir.
Before we go to Utilities.
Let me get that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry. Let's move back there.
No problem.
Please go back to page seven on the agenda, Public Service and Transportation, ordinance 0759-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse AEP and AT&amp;T, Columbia Gas, and other utilities for utility relocation costs incurred in conjunction with the Parsons Schottenstein Revitalization, Southern Gateway Utility Relocation Project for the Development Department, to counsel two auditor certificates, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash between projects within the same fund, to appropriate and authorize expenditure of up to $225,000 within the Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund 735, and to declare an emergency. I'd like to move to table one week. I believe I need to have a voice vote on this.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Miller? Mills?
abstain.
Tyson? President Ginther.
And then if we would, well, let's see, if we're going to Utilities and then we're going to need to go back, President Ginther. In the Utilities, Public Utilities Committee, I have ordinance 0384-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification for the Professional Construction Management Services Agreement with URS Corporation, Ohio for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer and expenditure up to $13,500,000 within the Waterworks Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, and the Water Permanent Improvement Fund, to authorize an amendment to the 2013 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance 0617-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with the United Survey, Inc., for the Clintonville Lining Project, to transfer within and expend to, up to $4,656,31 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bonds Fund, to amend- Bonds Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Ordinance 0720-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with TruCo Construction Company Inc. for the Nationwide Boulevard Transmission Main Improvements Project for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure up to $2,172,937.03 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Now, I'd like to move to page eight of the Agenda under Public Utilities. There's another piece under, oh, I'm sorry.
Just that final piece of legislation, 0809, sir.
0809, 2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a modification to the Specialty Maintenance Craft Services Contract with the Ryder Company Inc. for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize expenditure of $400,000 from the Sewage System Operating Fund, and $250,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
And now, I believe, the final piece of legislation under Public Utilities, I'd ask you to move to page eight. It is ordinance 0550-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to pay joint use of post-rental fees to the Ohio Power Company AEP in accordance with the terms of an existing agreement, and to modify said agreement, to authorize expenditure not exceeding $168,690 from the Electricity Operating Fund, to consent to the assignment of the agreement for joint use of posts by Columbus Southern Power to Ohio Power Company, and to declare an emergency. I move to table for one week, and ask for a voice vote. Yes.
Klein?
abstain.
Miller?
abstain.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
Thank you, President Ginter. That is all that I have this evening. Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginter. Three pieces of legislation tonight in development. The first is 804-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Allied Mineral Products, saying for a tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 years on new construction and real property improvements, in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately $12,690,000. This is to increase Allied Mineral Products corporate headquarters and R&amp;D space that will result in the creation of 58 new jobs in the City of Columbus, and Allied Minerals will be investing the $12.69 million. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is 817-2013. I request the table for one week, and request a voice vote.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
abstain.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginter.
And finally, 837-2013, I'd like to invite up Loretta King from the Columbus Urban League. It's to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an agreement with the Columbus Urban League for the administration of the Fair Housing Program, to authorize the expenditure of $105,456 from the CDBG Fund, and to declare an emergency. Thank you for coming down to council, Ms. King. What, what can we expect to see out of the $105,000, and what great things is the Urban League doing?
Well, good evening, President Ginter, council members, and we are just very happy to be able to have this funding. And on behalf of our President and CEO, Stephanie Hightower, I want to thank council for this funding for the Columbus Urban League. These are vital dollars, and we're going to, that will allow the Urban League to conduct HUD-certified activities in the area of, dedicated to eliminating the social and legal barriers to fair housing and assist individuals who are at risk in maintaining their homes and homelessness. So this funding is going to allow us to be able to see over 1,000 individuals that we will meet for rental counseling in the areas of landlord-tenant rights. We will be able to mediate and advocate for them. We will also be able to do fair housing testing throughout the City of Columbus to make sure that our landlords are providing safe, decent, and affordable housing to Central Ohio residents in the City of Columbus. This is also going to be able to provide needed materials that are necessary. We have a Know Your Rights handbooklet that has become very vital in the community to help landlords and tenants through our workshops, to be able to understand their rights, understand what they need to do if they do have a dispute, and of course, they can come to the Columbus Urban League for free for those services as well. So this is needed funding. We will see over 3,000 people this year. We have three counselors dedicated to this area with over 50 years of service and knowledge in this particular area of fair housing. We will also be able to provide, lastly, funding for housing discrimination regarding the fair housing laws, and if necessary, we'll partner with the Ohio Commission of Civil Rights or Franklin County Courts to help provide legal actions for, to help tenants.
Thank you, Ms. King. I urge my colleagues to support this legislation, to ensure that Columbus residents get a fair shake for a dignified place to lay their head at night. Any questions or comments? I move for passage. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
And that wraps up development, and we have nothing on Recreation and Parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary, I have one ordinance, ordinance seven, I'm sorry, 0790-2013, to authorize an appropriation of $8,750 from the unappropriated balance of the Special Purpose Fund for the Division of Police for law enforcement training purposes, and to declare an emergency. Ordinance 1271-00 passed in June 2000, which established a special fund for the Division of Police to deposit proceeds from police activities. Other law enforcement agencies are charged fees for the renting of our classroom space, police videotapes, and other training materials, and then the proceeds from those charges are deposited in the Police Training Fund, and then used to invite speakers and other trainees, and conduct additional law enforcement training sessions. Again, this is a needed ordinance for our police division. Continued training is what keeps them, continue to be internationally accredited, Division of Police. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Regular meeting number 19. So moved. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
We stand in adjournment. We will take non-agenda speakers momentarily, and will reconvene for regular meeting number 20, zoning committee, at 6:30. Regular meeting number 20 will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, they're not.
Any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, they're not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. In the zoning committee tonight, we have one item, 780-2013 to rezone 6221 Cleveland Avenue, be a 1.18 plus or minus acres, located at the southwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Community Park Drive, from LC4 Limited Commercial District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is McDonald's USA LLC. Proposed use is expansion of existing restaurant. It receives a Development Commission recommendation for approval, and the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight.
Nothing else to come before the zoning committee this evening, and entertain a motion to adjourn? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Tyson, President Ginter.
Stand in adjournment.